Welcome, everybody. We have a meeting here at the Planning Board, so thank you all for coming. And just for the purpose of tape, today is September 5th, 2018. And we're meeting with the Planning Board to continue our discussion of possibly doing a generic environmental impact statement. And essentially with the goal of carrying out the comprehensive plan that was adopted, one of the goals of the comprehensive plan that was adopted last year. And I think today we're going to talk about trying to figure out what areas to study and how, you know, how dense we want to make it, but dense we want to study today. Right? Is that accurate?
Yes.
All right, sir. Switch it up.
Very well done. So I can kind of give you a sense. I sent you all a memo which kind of took us from the presentation, the last discussion that the two boards had had regarding a presentation for an area up on North Greeley Avenue. There seemed to be consensus that everybody, in general, I don't want to commit anybody, but in general liked the look and feel of that redevelopment. So when looking at that redevelopment, my office took the general footprint of it. We looked at the information that was provided in the slideshow as to how many residential units, how many parking spaces, and we replicated it in other areas, in what we consider infill areas, in the hamlet. And when we look at infill areas, we look at areas that are publicly owned or easy to own, and really tried to get a sense of the maximum realistic development potential that could occur in each of these areas. And so I had submitted a memo to you that included a map. And there, you know, this was the area up here on North Greeley that we discussed. There's also an area in the Allen Street parking lot. There is this area of the train station. And just to give you a sense, throughout the public outreach for the comprehensive plan, this loop and the, in the middle, you can't see it because the wording is over, but this, the flagpole outside of the train station is a landmark area. So this ring seemed to resonate, these rings seemed to resonate with most residents, preserving the Woodburn Avenue and the ring effect in front of the train station, were something that people really expressed a desire to keep. So we looked at the area in, you know, it's not the southern parking area, we identified the southern commuter parking lot as well, but we also looked in this area for potential infill. We, you know, we did announce, I shared with you some of the caveats we used in kind of doing some of the calculations. And most importantly, because these three areas are really parking lots right now, we did not anticipate loss of any parking spaces, which, and we configured, assuming that the parking became covered parking due to construction above, we looked at how many residential units you could have based on the footprints of the North Greeley Avenue building, and kind of came up with some numbers as to how many units we generally thought could be there.
Right.
Those are maximum number of units. There could be more, there could be less, but it's a general maximum. And the reason we're looking for, one, an area, and, two, a sense of the amount of development, is because in order to do a GEIS or the specific studies as Jill, Nick, and I had discussed, we really need to identify an area to apply the analyses on, and we also need to look at the worst-case scenario in relation to those analyses.
What does that mean?
When you do, conduct an environmental analysis, you look at the maximum amount of development occur, so that if less development occurs, because that's what you, you know, that is what you result on, the impact is covered. You look at the worst potential impact to determine whether or not it is an impact and whether or not you've made it.
Some of those numbers seem staggering. They were pretty significant.
Yeah. Well, again...
I was afraid it might seem significant.
Again, it is, it is up, you know, it's all of your decision, you know. Just to give you a sense, in looking at the North Greeley Avenue, it's 100 residential units, okay? When looking at Allen Place, we're looking at a four-story model of 42 units, a five-story model with 56 units. When we look at the train station parking lot, the north area, we're looking at 73 units with a four-story model, we're looking at 98 units with a five-story model. When we look at the commuter parking lot, we're looking at 339 units, or at a four-story, 452 out of five story. So, you know, the project that everybody talked about on North Greeley was two and three stories, I believe? We automatically added a level to these because we wanted to preserve existing parking.
Can I ask about that? It's not clear to me.
Sure.
Preserve existing parking, meaning that commuter, essentially commuter parking, which is there now, would remain, and you'd build on a deck over that.
Correct.
So where do you park the residences?
As you, as you, as was demonstrated in the North Greeley project, you had parking in the back half. We included in the overall floor area enough space and deducted that per the necessary car. You know, so it's a 300, it's just 300 square foot parking space. There's typically a 10% factor for accessways, support beams, so on and so forth. So we looked at the, we looked at the maximum square footage in a story and divided that by parking. We calculated 1.5 parking spaces per unit.
So you took that number out of the gross development area?
Correct.
Which yielded the number of units?
Yes.
So, or the unit?
Square footage.
The unit developed square footage and by 1,100 or whatever it is.
Correct.
So where do those cars go?
As part of the development, you build in the parking for the residences.
So, right, they have to go up?
Yes.
Above, they have to be on the deck that you're building on top of?
Or they need to go up behind the residences. Again, right, we did not design this.
Okay. I'm just trying to understand the stat and how it works.
Yeah, well, and it's, again, it's how it's designed.
You're assuming it's a podium, right?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct, but, but also, you can't fill this entire thing in, you're not doing big, huge buildings. You know, the architectural detailing, the styling that everybody liked was not a square building. It had, it had elements of shape to it, it had different elevations, different story variation, roof line variation.
You're going to have car valves for light there and all that, right?
Exactly. So, so again, this is just a macro sense of the magnitude.
Question I had is just, just for my education. Why is it that the residential is considered to be the worst case?
It's not.
I thought this is the worst-case scenario.
Worst-case scenario.
This is the worst, this is...
Residential versus a mixed versus a commercial, I'm saying.
Right, this is the worst case in the sense of doing all residential. If we were to add a factor of a second floor of commercial or somehow change this to add commercial, we would then calculate that, but when we looked at this, what, what we examined was residential here, focusing on keeping the businesses on in the main hamlet area viable. If there is interest in creating commercial clusters, we can discuss that and include that. Commercial use would be an additional impact, would be more impactful than residential use.
That's my thought, okay.
Absolutely, but we examined just the residential side of this.
But that's not really necessarily then the worst-case scenario because...
Correct.
I mean, our current zoning requires a mix of residential and commercial.
Our current zoning doesn't allow this.
Right, right.
Period.
Right.
So we had our last joint meeting, it wasn't just about residential, it was commercial.
I used an earmark starting right now on residential.
Okay.
We need some guidance, you know, if one, which area? And do you want first floor commercial space on the base of these? What kind of magnitude of commercial square footage would you be looking at? And I can help you identify some of that like I did with residential. We figured we'd start with residential to see your discussion. I don't know if we'd want to put commercial use over here. You may want commercial near the trains, I don't know. Again, this is...
We didn't even talk about these areas in our last...
No, we didn't, but when, these are, these are areas based on infill, where it can easily be formulated in the sense it's publicly held property, there would be a process, you're not dealing with 12 different property owners, you know, this is kind of just giving you the pros and cons. You had great discussion by an area owned by 12 different property owners.
Which is the North Greeley Avenue.
Correct.
And is the, is the GIs going to be for...
It's a GEIS.
GIS. You have four areas identified? So are we going to do it for, are we going to pick one tonight, or are we going to do four?
Uh-uh.
Or is that up for discussion?
I leave that, that's what's up for discussion.
Well, I leave it up for discussion, right? Okay, fair enough.
Yeah, exactly. And you may say, "We don't want any of this." Do you know what I'm saying? This is to give you some framework for your discussion.
And this is just a study. This doesn't mean that a developer is going to come in and do something there, it's just a study to invite somebody to come.
Well, it's a study to determine what something like this would do to the current traffic condition. We, we would study traffic and stormwater. Those are the two biggest elements that shape development today.
So let me just ask you, because I'm a little confused. We're studying traffic for some hypothetical mix of commercial and retail, which we don't even know yet. If we had decided we wanted all commercial, let's say, and no residential, sorry, I meant commercial and residential, the, the study would be completely different than if we decided it was all residential, correct?
The, the analysis...
So how do you know what we're having them study?
We're not there yet. You're in the process of defining that right now. You need to define the scope within which we would craft an analysis around.
And if you were... Okay, I'm sorry.
One of the things I think we had talked about last time was the fact that before you can determine what the maximum or what the desirable potential would be for any one of these properties, you sort of had to look at the downtown holistically, because you have to anticipate what might happen on the private, privately-owned properties, or what ultimate, you know, what maybe the town could enter into a private-public partnership at some point. So is it, is it really appropriate to just look at four different areas and say, "We'll do a GEIS on just those four areas, but we don't know what the potential is for the rest of the downtown area?"
So you have zoning regulations in place for the rest of the downtown area, even for these parking lots? If you are interested in, in looking at wholesale zoning changes for the entire hamlet or for Greeley Avenue, or, you know, the lower King Street Greeley Avenue, you'd have to do an analysis and consider what zoning changes you want. You know, we have height restrictions right now, we have antiquated buildings. A lot of the buildings that are in the hamlet today being used for existing commercial uses are difficult to retrofit for the commercial uses that are viable storefront operations today, primarily because of the trending in shopping and online presence, and, you know, the restaurant difficulties that we have in creating adequate space according to health and fire safety issues in the existing building stock. They can, they, property owners today can renovate, renovate the second and third stories of their buildings. They either don't want to, or it is not economically feasible for them to do so. You, is through the comprehensive plan process, have identified needs for the community that can be met by additional development or changes to the existing zoning. Those are, that's kind of what's before you. You guys had met, you liked a proposal here. We went back and talked about how we would do a GEIS, and there were two questions that we had that said, "Well, where are we applying this? And what are, what's the, what are the maximums we're looking at?"
But I think we need to frankly look at the parameters of the things that we're going to look at. And I would suggest it's actually much more than just traffic and stormwater. So I think, you know, I think there are more, more issues that we would include in the GEIS than just those two, and I don't think they're necessarily, stormwater I don't think is really the major one. I mean, we'll take care of it, that can be done. But the sewers, water, pedestrian usage, there's vitality, uh...
Right. I agree, but I think the intent of having this meeting was to give us direction, because we can do a GEIS, and we come back and we've looked at it for 800 units, and you're going to say, "Why did you do 800 units? You should have looked at something..."
Right, so...
So we just need some...
Guidance.
So let me, let me ask it, see if I can get to it a different way, probably a different way to do it, but let me see if it works. We, if you take this, these now four to include the, the North Greeley as part of this sort of baseline data analysis, essentially is what it would be, it seems to me, and just, just make one big box out of it, and just say, even ignoring for a moment how much development each one of these sites could take, but just make a box and say, "What is the threshold for traffic, new traffic, coming in and out of this box? How much can we stand? Where, where does it get to the breaking point where we now have a problem? And we, it's either, it's either actually an engineering problem, you can't get the stuff in and out, or it's a quality of life problem." And that's, the quality of life problem is a judgment call, right? But if, instead of getting like buried into, and Bob is right, I think, I think we all know that Bob's right about this, which is that it's more than just a numbers exercise. You need to get to what are you actually solving for? And one of the things that we were trying to solve for when we fiddled around with North Greeley, and that's historical plans, it's a hysterical plan at the time, now it's a historical plan, it's done, right? It's dead, that's fine. But the objectives of that particular exercise were not just how many residential units can we get on here, but what in the, in the service of all the other things which are quality-of-life stuff for the hamlet, would those residences and those, that commercial space, how could we package that in order to check off all those boxes and not get beyond what the traffic problem might be, what the density problem might be, people's perception that, "Oh geez, you know, I wanted restaurants, but I didn't want all these big buildings down here."
Tom, I think that's one way of approaching it, the difficulty I have is that you can identify a problem, and then the next step is how do you resolve that problem? You can engineer a lot of different solutions to problems. So we need to, I think that's one way to look at it, but if, for example, we looked at the total buildout that added 2,000 new residents to the downtown area, would everyone conceptually say, "Nah, it's not really what our vision was." We had a, maybe it's 1,000 people, maybe it's an extra 700 people. That's sort of what we're looking for the discussion to be.
How do we know that?
I don't, I don't know what that even means.
Yeah.
Those were scary numbers when I saw it in these.
But why are these, why are these scary for you?
Well, when I see 339 units, for example, thinking that 339 units is probably two people per unit, and that's residential, and hundreds, really realistically, hundreds of more cars, irrespective of the parking being okay, you're going to flood those streets that are cramped as is, and traffic is miserable. And I know right now because it's construction, but nonetheless, it's a narrow corridor with a bunch of left turns. You're going to stick two or three hundred more cars in there, that'll be quite like...
The subject of it being a narrow corridor also goes to the height of the buildings too. I mean, you know, you put, you take our little downtown hamlet and you put five-story buildings on it, I think, I think aesthetically you have a problem, you have a problem with a canyon-like effect on the streets who have shadows instead of open space, you know. I personally, I don't like the idea of a five-story or maybe even a four-story building. I think it's a lot for the downtown, you know? And that's not solving for how many people and the apartments or how many apartments there are, but just aesthetically, what would happen if you put four and five-story buildings on the streets?
And there's even, I'm sorry, but...
Just to respond to your point, I think when you look at it as 800 units or 600 units, "Oh wow, that's a lot," but it would never happen in a blink of an eye. A developer would probably come in, you could do 80 to 120 units at a time, and they're going to do it in stages. They can't afford to come and build all these units and have them sit vacant. So yes, it's going to be a step. So if, let's say a guy comes in to 68 units in a residential bar, that's going to add traffic to the area, in time it's going to get absorbed, and then five years later you may have another building go up. So eventually you could get up to 800 units, but I don't think that's something that happens in a year or two. I think that's a, almost a generational thing.
That's fair, I mean, I mean, I don't know, that's fair, but we're nonetheless preparing for the future, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Got to know where it's going.
Say that's next generation's problem is not the answer, and that's what you're saying.
No, I wasn't saying that.
But if you plan for it to happen, it will happen.
Yeah, so it's going to be a sponge, eventually it's going to be oversaturated, you can't handle it. You know, and just thinking out loud, and this has probably come up many, many times, when we're looking at these on islands in little boxes, you know, we have, we have the rec field. What if, you know, is that part of the equation that the rec field gets swapped out with a developer for another, another property? We have across the street up off of North Greeley, soon to be not there, Walgreens or whatever it is now, right?
Right.
Yeah, I actually added that whole area.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a sort of, we don't know what the, we don't know what, it may be that our projections for traffic were far too great, we dropped across the Conifer, and we're happy. Maybe that's far more bringing traffic through downtown. So how are we calculating for this and what this is going to do to us in terms of traffic? If we don't know even what that is?
This is, this is...
Sorry, is there a question?
Yeah, no, well, and I don't have answers for you, other than we try and use the best information we can, because we need to invest dollars in these analyses. I think also, there has been a shift in the, there are believers and non-believers, but there are less licensed drivers than there have ever been. There is more population, population is growing, but less people are owning individual cars. Okay? There's rideshare, there's Zipcar, there's all of these things that are geared towards alternatives to owning personal vehicles. All of us sitting around this table, we will always own a car. Okay? I can tell you that there are younger generations that will never own a car.
Well, I, I'm sorry, forgive me, but, and that's an interesting conversation, and there can be debates about that, and we, you know, in certain cases you're right, in certain cases I think that that may not be true. If you live in this community, unless you live right down in the center of the hamlet, you're going to have a car.
Even then, you're still...
It's a car, it's a...
It's just part of, it's just part of the lifestyle and the expectation, et cetera. That's what I think. So, but that, that's an interesting debate, but I don't understand how that conversation gets us to where, what the next step might be in doing a GEIS, which would be a generic GEIS, without any definition of what you're studying. And I know this is an attempt to figure that out, but to me, tying it to these different sites is really not very useful. It's, it's telling us what the overall capacity of the hamlet might be, but before anybody, it seems to me, before anybody says four and five stories, we probably want to have a conversation about that right away. I'm not certain that the folks who want to have a more lively hamlet want to have five-story apartment buildings and on top of parking decks. I mean, I'm just not sure that that's a, a quality-of-life thing. So there are certain sort of, I think, judgment calls that go into these numbers. And for instance, the commercial, I'm not certain that we want to be putting shops over here. I think the shops want to go where the shops are. The more shops you put over here, the more you draw the activity from over there. That's a conversation, it seems to me, that we probably want to have. Where are we going to put that?
Are you on shops here?
So I'm not sure.
Are you on special shops?
In order to come to terms with all that, it's almost as though you need to do a little bit more, maybe a lot more, I don't know, physical planning studies. Or you go back and just say, "How much more traffic?" I don't care if it's people coming to shop, if it's people going to the train station, if it's people who are living down here, just how much more traffic can this, this box stand, for, for example? And that right there will give you a pretty good indication of how much development, and what you, how many cars, and then how you slice and dice that development in terms of retail and housing and so on, is the next level. But that will give you the, it seems to me, that will give you the, you know, the, the top of the box, and that's as far as you can go.
So if we took that idea, right, and let's say, because I think you, it's a valid point, so, and I think these guys just need data to go forward, right? So let's...
We need some framework for that analysis.
You need some framework, right? Not, not, it's not a, the solution.
It doesn't have to be this.
It's just a framework. So, you know, if, if the thought was, okay, to start, listening, you know, maybe we cap it at there's one story with two levels or three levels of residential above, just to cap it, maybe you do a ratio of 75% residential and 25% commercial, just so you guys have some numbers. I think your parking numbers shouldn't be backed in by square footage, they should be backed in by maybe like a ULI standard of parking ratios. Maybe you do one-to-one for resi and two-to-a-thousand for office and three-to-a-thousand for retail, which are much lower than the standards in a lot of communities, because people are parking less and less. And maybe they just have a framework where they can start crunching numbers.
I think, I think we, you know, I think we're forgetting something. We've done this work with a comprehensive plan. We know what to solve for. We've heard from residents for a couple of years, we did all these interviews. So we know what people want, it's in our document. Now what we do is we solve for the solution, and that is, okay, what combination, and we play with that, commercial residential guesses there, what combination of parking and traffic gets us there? We know what people want, we have a comprehensive plan. Why are we reinventing and going five stories, four stories? We know that's what people don't want. We heard from people for, what, a year? We have a document, so we know what we want it to be generically in this, this conceptually. Now what we have to do is put, plug in the, the various combinations, that is what I think we should be studying. What is that mix? Is it 75, 25 to Greg's points?
Is there a threshold that a developer won't be interested in?
I don't know. I don't know.
If we, if we know what we want, but we don't want, and just play devil's advocate here, and we don't want more than two stories we can get up, is it possible developers as well, "I can't, I can't make a profit." Like, where do we go? And do we have to go back and say, "Okay, do we consider three, or do we scrap that whole plan?"
Well, I, I think, I think we build what we want to build. Developer can build what he wants to build, but he doesn't have to build it here.
Right, we have to find a partner, right? We're not in the business of building.
And, and yes, and there's also, there's also just a fundamental thing, which is sometimes it's just not time to build. You just sort of have to wait for the market to turn, you know, for things to happen. You don't necessarily want to push something that, yeah, you didn't have to do anyway.
Well, that's true. I didn't want to say this happening tomorrow, that's the conversation.
No, I understand, I know, I understand. So we, Nick, we've got, and Sabrina, there have been traffic studies of this hamlet, recent traffic studies, right? So we know what the levels of service are, we know what the capacity, excess capacities that these roadways are. I think we have that information. And if you were to, I hate to go back to the box again, but maybe it's a bad idea, but if you were to go ahead and mark the gateways into this, you could get a traffic engineer with the existing studies and say, "Okay, you're going to hit level of service F with 100 more cars an hour," or whatever it might be. And those then become the, the baseline of what you can stand, and if you want to develop more, then you have to be willing to engage ideas of improving your infrastructure, widening streets, finding some traffic management, creative traffic management strategies, I don't know what they might be. But it seems to me we have the baseline data that tells us free and clear, without having to do any more, just on traffic alone, but any more traffic work.
No, you're resigning.
How much development can we take? And then, and then how we slice it up in order to put it...
Maybe the only reason I'm thinking this is more planning than legal is that if you're designing a TOD, do you know what percentage is not using cars during the peak period?
We make an assumption.
Right? And what percent of that is commercial versus residential?
You make an assumption, and Sabrina has some, some knowledge on this subject, so we apply that knowledge as well. You could say that, well, because people are living down here now, they maybe have one less car, right? Or they, you know, those are assumptions you feed into that, and a traffic guy can help you with those assumptions. And then you begin, I think you begin to get a sense of just how much you can physically put in here. Then it's where it goes and what the mix is and...
You know, but I just want to bring up one element in the slice and dice, which maybe we're not there yet, but it's something that you brought up, Tom, when you did your conceptualization of the downtown, which was that there was a place-making moment in the downtown, like the pool, or a theater, or something that brings people into the, into the chaplain hamlet, you know, because we can't really rely on just retail alone anymore to bring people in. So I don't know what traffic figures are for a place-making element, but you know, that is another factor. You've got a residential factor, you've got a commercial, retail factor, and you've got this place-making attraction, hopefully, that will bring people into the downtown. So that's part of the slice and dice.
Which again, was articulated in the plan.
Right.
And so, well, for residents, this is what they wanted for a vital hamlet.
I think we're leaving, I think what we're leaving out is, Jeremy alluded to it, developers are going to, you have, it has to work for developers. So, you know, like, you talk about like the Napoli plan, let's, let's put a structure over the parking lot, that's fantastic, that's $8 million, and who's going to pay for it? But if you put a parking structure at the parking lot, and then if somebody gets 200 residential units, then maybe they could pay for that parking structure. I don't know the numbers.
Right.
I'm just saying, that's what's going to guide this, is economics. I like Tom's idea, we just look at the whole downtown, and, and then you come up with a number, and then you leave it to developers to come up and say to us with different ideas, and it could be 10 different developers come down with 10 different incredible ideas, and then we decide what makes sense. The developers also know what people are looking for, whether it's millennials, or the people that are moving into these areas. I will say this, and many, most of you probably know it already, Scarsdale's an RFP right now for the train station, Mount Kisco's an RFP right now for the train station, these people are doing it, Pleasantville's building housing in downtown, developers are doing it for a reason.
Chris, will you just finish building housing at the train station?
They're, they're doing it for a reason. People want to live near the train station. That's, follow the money. I mean, that's why they're doing it, they're not, these people know what people want. They're not gonna waste their, they may be making mistakes, but for the most part, they realize what people are looking for.
But it's also, and I know you're not disagreeing, it's a combination of what they want and will do, and what we want to them, what we want them to do.
I understand, we want, what we want is a town that is vibrant, has some box, because we do have something called the internet nowadays, and people don't want to get in their cars. We're talking about all these traffic counts. The fact is, I'm not saying traffic counts aren't important, but when, when you talk to people that are moving, when you talk to the real estate agents, people don't want to get in their car to drive everywhere, they want to be able to walk to get there.
That may be true, but my...
They don't want, they don't want to get in the car.
That may be true, Rob, but this is Newcastle, which is not a densely populated municipality. From the west end to the east end, there's a lot of open space, and I think that's one of the draws that people come here.
And then, and that's fine.
So, they may not want that, and that's going to, we have to judge that or balance that part of me, because if, if, if I live outside, which I do, frankly, I'm not gonna want to come downtown if I can't move, because I know I'm gonna hit a move traffic.
But you're not going to, because the people that are, more people living down here are keeping their cars in the garage. They're gonna have cars, it's got, but they're not gonna have two cars, they're gonna have one car, because the person like me is not gonna have to drive to the train station every day, because I can walk to the train station.
Right, but I think, Jeremy, were you making the point that if we saturate the downtown, then the people who live outside in the hamlet aren't gonna want to come down anymore, because it's just gonna be a...
But they don't, but they don't come now. Nobody comes.
I know, it's not sustainable, there's nobody on the streets, this is not, this is not sustainable.
We all talk, but you're not here, you know, 100 people.
Yeah, we, we park in this train station, but the merchants are not seeing the foot traffic.
I understand, but if you know, come before it, it's not...
It's dead, and it's, it's dead, it's not, it's not...
Eating your shit, I want it.
Yeah, I, the hamlet, I think the hamlet is a place people actually go through, they don't come to.
Right.
They go through because they're on their way to someplace else, or they, or they, they're going through because they're hopping on the train, but there's no, they don't come here to sort of necessarily be here.
Right, so in order to, where in our suggested downtown, other than these areas, the three open parking lots, would you put a...
Why did you say, I'm sorry if you said this before, why is the rec field off?
Because people are very clear.
They were very clear that they did not want to move rec field. Like, that was like one of the number one things they wanted to keep.
And it's parked, Lancer, you have to do another...
I mean, that's based on what it is.
Right, so moving is a relative term, like, moving at a, you know, moving, what do you mean by moving? Moving to the downtown?
But let's put it this way, from a planning perspective, the entire frontage along Greeley of that rec field is prime.
I know.
Yeah, right.
But we have, again, we're talking about gentle changes when, you know, this was not seen as a favorable thing to most of the public when we had those discussions.
We showed them, we showed them flip-flopping, the baseball field, and the back parking area, Sabrina's left hand.
Yeah.
And people's issue was, oh, the kids out there, walk to the baseball field.
Whole big area, no one cares about this building.
And that, that allowed...
Again, looking for some direction here, folks.
Lisa's making a good point, though. Why is this building on the street? This should be, this building should be back.
Right, this is a whole big area here.
This doesn't, town hall doesn't need to be a prominent spot, it should be in the back corner someplace.
Oh, I don't...
That's a good back corner, but...
Well, I'm just saying, because it's not, because there's better, there's better uses for this particular piece of property.
Yeah, but they're looking at the cost to move this building, and everything associated with it, and build another one, are you gonna throw the bond for that, and that's why you're in Republican?
No, but it's gonna be a developer coming in, maybe it could be incorporated somehow into a plan.
Think about like a rec, let's, let's assume for a second, you have a recreation, a recreation area with town hall or third floor.
We can extend these lines.
I was saying, think about right here at this spot, you have a recreation center, like a real one, I'm not talking about like, we have to reserve it and one group uses it a ton. A real recreation center, a lot of towns have, but all different age groups can go in at the same exact time without an appointment. You could have residential or town hall on the third floor, you know, I mean, you could do something with this particular, with this particular lot, and make it a destination, it could have an indoor pool or something. I mean, this is town-owned. But I'm not saying I have all the ideas, I'm just saying, we should, like what Tom said, is we should use a big thing, come up with a number, and then let the developers have fun with it. It's not to say I'm gonna do anything, but let's, let the developers...
Well, that's, that's critical, people to understand, because this conversation's not saying it's happening, it's looking.
Yeah, that's all.
We just want to get ideas.
And maybe, maybe the developer will come up with a plan where we do move the rec fields, which makes a lot of sense, and then when people see it, they're like, wow, that does actually look good. Because right now, if you mention it, quite honestly, it's probably like political suicide. You guys have to worry about that, but we do.
Yeah, like, we talked about moving the gazebo at one time.
I didn't, I...
How dare you say...
I do now remember that conversation. I told you I'd deny it. I told you I'd deny it.
I wanted to move the gazebo out front, so it'd be a gateway to the town.
Okay, move the gazebo, go ahead.
It was like, $300,000.
So, I, I happen to agree, I think that, I mean, you gotta, you gotta decide if you're gonna do it or you're not gonna do it. And there's nothing yet that says that that is a necessary, that the ball field is a necessary site in order to accommodate the amount of development that you could fit in here anyway. You may not be able to, there may not be enough development so that you would take that site to do it. There are other places in which you could, other red boxes here, which you could do development also. I, I guess I would say, I mean, for now, let's figure out how much actually we're talking about, instead of, to me, instead of looking at all, you know, well, okay, let's do something here, let's do something here, let's do something here. It's an interesting discussion, and it may bear fruit at some point in time, but I think that it's, I think it's premature, let's figure out how much, I mean, if you take all these together, it was 450 units, 398, it's about 600 units.
Well, the five-story buildings.
Yeah, five-story buildings, well, it's on the page, so, 600 units, I don't think 600 units is probably gonna happen, but it might. But I just think that, well, I'll be quiet, I just think if you get, just know what the overall number is, and you'll have a more realistic view about where you go and how much land you need to do it.
I know we're not giving you guidance, but I just find it hard to figure out how to possibly give you guidance without ideas of what we might do.
Well, there's another way you can, you can approach this, I mean, you know, I wrote down several criteria that you guys talked about tonight. You talked about a place-making element, a mix of residential versus commercial, meeting the needs of a comprehensive plan, you know, understanding the threshold of where profit will be revealed, and maybe understanding the traffic access, the load system. Well, well, you also have the need for parking and what those ratios should be, you know, and, and GEI, that is not a GEIS. A GEIS is when you have definitive exploration of the environmental aspects of the areas you want to develop, to determine what the environmental thresholds are on those areas. What this is identifying is an expression of interest to the development community to come back with proposals as to how they can meet your wish list, your criteria in development in the hamlet.
Here's my hand, ask my question, what's stopping us from putting it out there before you even do a GEIS or anything, just saying, hey, making guarantees of nothing, but we're interested in this.
Right, well, and that's what this is.
Instead of, instead of us going and spending, doing it on each little area, just like...
I just, you know, I just want to say one thing, I am, I am somewhat concerned that as we broaden this conversation, that it eventually dies under its own weight. So, you know, we were talking about something, Tom showed us a model, it was aligned with our comprehensive plan, it checked off many boxes, and I'm concerned that as we get bigger, and I, I hear you when you say, you know, how can we consider the impacts of this without considering what, what's going to do to the rest of the town? But I just want to be cautious that we don't get so big in our thinking that we bite off more than we can chew.
But that was also a private issue, private property.
Understood, understood.
You got the best intentions and best ideas.
I have a question about Mount Kisco, if anybody knows the history, and I'm not putting this out as a, as a model of what we should do, but how, when I moved here, Mount Kisco on Moja Avenue has a, an entire two or three blocks of brick-fronted stores, some of which are now empty, but how did that happen? Is that, was that all one property owner? That, that they were, that they were able to take...
Was it respectful for pedestrian thing?
Uh, there were kind of pedestrian little avenues going through it, and...
Yeah, there was a fire, there was a...
And so was it one owner for all the property, and that owner was able to...
There was a fire.
I don't, I don't know.
There was a fire.
We're not...
No, it was three. It was Fox and Sutherland, remember the guy from Grand Central came in? He rebuilt this beautiful store, Mount Kisco store, company there, and then there was a terrible fire with Baskin Robbins, I think one of their compressors went, and took down the whole line. And so they ended up with this one-story brick, and that's, you know, where Tallow used to be, the, the entire, that whole, that whole area got rebuilt.
But was it able to be rebuilt all at once because it was one property owner, or was it a, was it a collaboration between the town and several properties? I'm just, I'm just wondering how it came about.
It was privately owned, whether it was one or more, I don't know.
The, the, the exercise on North Greeley, that thing, it was a leap of faith when it comes to how you assemble property and make that, make that go. And I've talked to a couple of developers informally about, you know, how you make that go, and they say it's not worth the risk to make it go. There is, by the way, another big piece of property, which is part of that study, which is, which is a single ownership, which is across the street where the drugstore is, which is in one of those batches. But that does not say that those pieces of property could be, the problem with them is that they're so small, you need to assemble at least two or three to do anything significant. So, that's the hard part, you don't necessarily have to get them all in order to do something, but you need to get two or three, and that can be a heavy load. And developers say, well, why am I gonna go to, I'd love to be in Chappaqua, but why am I gonna go there and wrestle with that when I can, I can go to Pleasantville, or I can go to Peekskill, or I can go, all these other places they're going, where they're finding places in order to, places they can, they can do this well. So Jeremy, my question to you was, you said invite the developers in, have they just been, I mean, they're all over the place, they're working everywhere, are they just dancing around us? I mean, why haven't they come and sat down? Why haven't they looked at properties? Have they looked at properties? Have they walked away because of the political situation of a, of a difficulty to settle their property?
I'm not aware of any developers, I don't know, I don't know, any developers coming to our downtown to say, hey, can we do a new parking lot, or do something with...
The most interest that has been seen in my office by developers for the downtown have been for the parking lots.
And they have to, in order to do that, somebody has to build a deck of some kind.
They have to change zoning.
Change your zoning, that's what we do. They have to build a deck.
Yeah, and they have to have a certain amount of residential units to make it work.
Right, and that means a tall building, a big building.
And most of them are, are newer.
And so what kind of, what kind of expenses for developers?
I don't think five would be, maybe four might be necessary.
Yeah.
I mean, if we put out, if we put out an RFP for the, not even RFP, something...
Expression of a...
Right, RFI, just, I think developers line up with this, with this, you are in downtown Chappaqua, what is it, nine acres of town-owned property, and in downtown, it's gonna have brand-new infrastructure, I understand that the parking, I mean, the driving and traffic item, all that stuff, but we still have brand-new infrastructure. I think there'd be an enormous interest.
That's a, see, I, I think that there would be already an interest, I mean, I don't know, I mean, I, they know we're here.
Because they don't think it's in play though, it's never been in play, we've never told them it's in play.
Yeah, I think we have to make the gesture.
Okay.
Without a promise or guarantee of anything, other than we're gonna look at what you invited and...
So what does RFP say?
It wouldn't be an RFP.
It wouldn't be an RFP.
It's an RFI.
Request of expression of interest.
Right.
So how detailed, if someone comes in and expresses some interest, how much detail do they provide about what they want?
I think we should see that. But I think we have to be clear that we're investigating.
Yeah, we've got some pre-structural parameters, I mean, if you guys are talking two, three stories, preservation of all existing parking, you know, you're looking for an adequate mix of new commercial space and residential units to support and bring vitality to the hamlet. You want a place-making feature constructed in, you know, you can talk about the entire renovation, restoration of the streetscape of the infrastructure, the light that will be going in, exactly, all of that.
So, yeah, that, that would apply to that particular site that that particular developer might be interested in, or, but how do we make a decision about whether that's the right guy, or the right piece of property doing the right thing, if we don't know what, if we don't know what it means to the build-out of the hamlet? I mean, how do we know whether we're...
Response has got to start somewhere.
No, I know you have to start somewhere, but you have to have, start, you have to, right, but you have to start somewhere with an understanding of where you're going, I think.
But I think, Tom, you can also just, the intent is not to pick a guy out of this process, but rather to see what is it that the market is building and is interested in, rather than what we think we want, let's try and marry the two, see if we can marry the two together. So let's see what the development community would bring to the table, and then you say, you know what, I like this, I don't like that, you have a discussion, and then you develop an RFP, or you develop another study, and then, and then you would go out and...
We say we don't want any of it.
Right.
Then you don't want any of it, then you do nothing.
Okay, that's fine, I'm just saying that, that's great, it's sort of an information gathering process.
Yes.
But the conclusion, it seems to me, needs to fold into an understanding of where you're going with the whole thing.
Absolutely.
Because that will guide who you pick, it seems to me, that will guide who you pick when to...
But maybe if you see some ideas, Tom, for people who are not educated in your field, I mean, I know what, I always say, know what I know and know what I don't know, it can at least show us what can be here and help us understand where we want to go.
No, no, I agree, I'm just saying you need to have it, I'm just saying you need to know where you're going.
I think the RFI should use as many touchstones as possible from our comp plan. Let them work with it, they'll figure it out, they'll know how to do it.
Yeah, we don't have to make a list for them.
It's in the plan, yeah, there you go.
But if I feel like I would like to, that's fine too, but, I mean, that's a simple task.
Wasn't that, I just wanted to, it's too much...
Certainly not.
But I, I think that, is that the consensus, that that's a better way to proceed?
And they can even tell us what studies need to be done as far as...
So what area, what area would you like the RFI to cover? Is it the entire area on this piece of paper? You know, does it include the town, you know, from Washington Avenue up north Greeley? I mean, what is your sense?
My suggestion would be the, it's the whole thing, and let them come to us in peace, Miller &amp; Holt, you know, and say what they, their ideas are.
Don't even give them the, don't even give them a map, just tell them in the hamlet.
Yeah, let, let them come with whatever they suggest and either...
They'll, they'll put boundaries on, if we're gonna bring them in, they'll put boundaries on them right away.
Well, I think you have to give them some map, you don't want them saying, yeah, we're gonna land a white br...
Well, that's a town, you can't...
Well, you need to have that discussion.
We need, yeah, you have to give them something.
So I feel like we do have to guess.
You can't just say, what would you do here? Because no one's gonna spend their time. If you just said, oh, what would you do here for free, tell me what you're gonna do, you're gonna give more meat-lax responsibilities. You gotta give them something.
You're not gonna afford your ability to say, go and develop Bob and Susan's-
No, other than it helps you develop zoning guidelines that they could then use to assemble parcels, right? When we want to, go ahead, Joe, I'm sorry.
So, I just wanted, what if, for example, we put, we developed an RFI that put the North Greeley property as, as the area of interest, and even though that's owned by twelve property owners, Tom made the point that there are very little properties, and people might be respective to the idea of a developer coming in and buying them out so that that piece of property could be developed.
But then, Tom, can you just say, no, what happens, you're gonna say, I want ten, ten times what it's worth.
I knew it was, I knew it was gonna be a stretch. I could see Scars into it, but these guys, see, I, I think the, the fact is that these guys, they don't have to take that on, they can go, like, they could go, they could go to Washington Avenue, like, did in and develop, they don't need to take that on.
Which is what we have to-
You want it to be easy, and that makes it difficult.
But what I was gonna suggest is, is a little similar to what you were saying, is basically, if we ask them to focus on town-owned properties, but then somehow also make these other properties, you know, sap, like, in other words, make it so that they may be encouraged to invest in these private properties, because they're gonna see how this downtown may develop. So for instance, you get a, let's say you have a one-story building, let's say you have squires, for example, right? I mean, somebody can look at that building and say, that's a great knockdown, and I could put a three-story building up there, or four maybe, with residential, and they can look at a lot of buildings in our downtown like that. But they may not be willing to do that unless they realize that we are looking to make our downtown more vibrant, and then it's gonna become, you know, like, worth the investment.
I'm concerned that a map like this draws not only to the town-owned property, so, I, I, I have no idea from a professional perspective, how do you structure an RFI?
An RFI is usually, an RFI is typically structured regarding specific areas of property. Mount Kisco is looking at changing their zoning.
Yeah.
They focused on the park, the, the train station parking lot, municipally-owned properties.
Right, they're exclusive, that's, that's exactly my point, actually, they're exclusively focused on those properties.
Correct, and, and that's-
We're saying we want to be able to consider a more holistic plan, how do we do that?
And there's no reason why we cannot include language in the RFI to discuss privately-held property that can be assembled to meet the same intentions. You, you know, we can create wording in this RFI to focus on town-held property, because quite honestly, that's easier and, and more attractive to the development community, because it's in public ownership, so to speak, it's, they're not dealing with private property owners. But we can say, in the event that assemblage of privately-held properties and, and do wording that would apply whatever it is they're proposing to other assembled properties in the hamlet.
Like, they may see a red zone and go, wow, if I could buy that gas station, that gets me a foothold onto the street, and that might then, let them go deal with that if they wanna do it. I think they will start to, most developers will look at a piece of land and start immediately thinking about, well, when I build something here with value, the property around it is gonna also increase in value, so maybe I wanna get a jump on that, too, and that's my phase two. I build value phase one, and I make my real money in phase two. So they would already, just by the entrepreneurial, you know, characteristic that they have, they would be looking at this.
Right, and, and we would, we would identify, I think it would be imperative to identify the street frontage where you would want commercial use, because that is your vitality.
So, um, so, in order to, sounds reasonable to me, so, this outreach may be, maybe I'm getting down into too far down the road in terms of writing this letter, but it seems to me that it ought to cite the comprehensive plan.
Absolutely.
That these are the objectives of the town, and so that they understand that rezoning, for example, is one of the tools that are in the toolkit, and that these are the things that the town is positioned to do, to meet these objectives in the hamlet, and if you wanna have a drawing that sort of defines an area, maybe it's a soft line, not a hard line.
Or we just show the hamlet boundary.
If, if you like. Maybe if they really understand that the town is poised to actually do something here, that you might, you might get some responses.
Property, too.
Property, too.
Yeah, I would like to keep North Greeley in there, as well as the whole Rite Aid, and maybe we just color them a different color to say, these are privately-owned, but maybe something can be done there. I mean, people develop, you know, city blocks all the time where they buy property owners, so it's certainly not something that's unheard of, so, but I think for, okay, we'll wait. But I think for vibrancy purposes, like, we do want North Greeley to be, that would ultimately be a great place to develop, and where Rite Aid is, because then you've got a straight shot of retail. So I think if we're gonna put that out, I'd still like to put it out there, maybe, maybe it is economically feasible for a developer to come in and say, we're gonna see if people are interested in selling.
Does anybody know what's happening with Rite Aid, what's it talking about?
I think, I think this been, uh, people lying is definitely towards residential, I know that.
So, um, can I just ask the-
The broad-sky property, too, by the way.
Yeah.
You gotta see what that seems like.
But could, would we be interested, for example, in saying that we would like commercial on the first floor?
Right, now your zoning requires commercial on the first floor.
Okay, so, anybody could?
Well, well, again, well, well, that's the thing, I, I mean, there is clearly a commercial corridor, Lower King Street, and, and if you look at the, the back of the Allen Street parking lot, you know, if you think about people's walking patterns, where commercial makes sense on the first floor, there's this little, you know, it's kind of like a, a backwards H, you know, and then running down Greeley. You know, it, it runs Greeley to North Greeley, it's Lower King Street, it's the back, uh, along Allen Street, going under the bridge near the train station.
Right, it's up King Street.
And it's up King Street.
Right, so that comes into play when these conversations start, and I don't think you need to begin to lay out physical planning principles in this letter.
Right, but, but I would like some direction on, on the parameters of what areas we're identifying in this draft or a hall, just so that I know the steps.
I think the whole, the whole downtown.
Sabrina indicated, I think that makes sense, the hamlet, uh, lines.
And here's our comprehensive plan, and by the way, just-
Our hamlet also goes all the way up King Street.
No, but, you know.
We can just focus down here, maybe, first. So draw, draw some lines, this, this whole downtown.
So, what, what, what we're gonna propose to do is that, um, we're gonna try a first, first cut of this, we're gonna use the, the downtown hamlet, um, what, what most of us consider to be the downtown hamlet, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll end it at some point going off King when, when it turns residential, um, and do a first draft, and then maybe we could have perhaps two members of each board take and review it, and, and maybe, so maybe just a smaller group, just work, take that one.
We could just circle it, maybe, and all have-
I think we should kind of, just have-
Just to flesh it out and then bring it back before the board, so it's-
Well, why can't we just do an email, everybody wants to know.
Start changes, I don't know how you do that.
In the outline, would you intend to-
Well, the only difficulty is with open meetings, well, you're then having discussions via emails of all group.
Have another joint meeting.
You can have another joint meeting, we're just trying to get a document to the full board that sort of reflects some of the thinking from, from your level, so the fault, I suggest, Joe, was why don't you just get two members of the board just to, because that's less than majority, to at least meet with us and give us some initial input and feedback, so we can further refine it, and then bring back to both boards. But we could also just take our cut and have another joint meeting. Yeah, I think that's the best, let's take the cut. Yeah. Oh, the only thing I would ask is, besides referencing the art, the, uh, comp plan, I wonder if when people come back with, with a proposal, we actually ask them also to tell us what zoning would need to be changed? Is that standard procedure?
Yeah.
Right, tell us what we need to do to make your plan work.
Right.
What change, zoning changes would be necessary.
Help us out, you know.
We just have to make it clear that zoning is, is an open issue, that-
Right.
That you have to, that you have to plan, and you're gonna need to do this, and then it affects-
Because we've heard so many times, developers, they-
They're going to go around for it.
DEIS now, or whatever. We give you parameters, you give ideas, and we like it, then we know where to discuss it.
So have a good residential.
Restaurants.
Great, thank you, guys, so appreciated, Ryan.
Thanks, guys.
So actually, the town board is gonna, um, continue on their work session?
Okay. We're staying here, right?
Yeah, we're gonna stay here.
Yeah, we're on next one.
Okay.
And the C law.
Yeah, there's a agreement.
So, what are we got here, downstairs?
Is there court in the-
No, I, I don't think it's a, a, a scheduled court, it's a, it's an emergency court.
We're gonna push some laws-
Relatively short court.
It's all to go, that's the word.